Call the regular city council meeting of August 5, 2020 to order, 7:00 PM. If you had joined me in pledging the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Copeland.
Here.
Tom Baylor.
Here.
Kathy Sherman.
Here.
Jeff Gard.
Here.
Melina Meyer.
Here.
Ann Schaefer.
Here.
David Allison.
Here.
And David Gleason.
Here.
That's Quarm, of council.
Okay, so for those online, we have myself, city clerk, city manager, councilman Baylor, councilman Gleason, and on IT Harmony Assistant Clerk, and then city staffer here, Tony Chanel, a harbor master, life staff, a planner, and Ken Fay, Finance Director. Approval of the agenda?
We've approved the agenda.
Take it.
Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda, anything anyone wants to add? Hearing none, they'll stand approved as submitted. Is there any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications council would like to disclose?
Yes, I believe I have one. I'm trying to find it on the agenda here. For payment, for work done.
Twenty?
Twenty, thank you.
Oh.
No?
No.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Councilman Baylor. Okay, a conflict of interest regarding services to the city.
Services and materials, I would like to point out.
Okay, thank you. Any other conflicts to declare council? Okay, hearing none. Communications buy-in petitions from visitors. And before we go into guest speakers, I'll just take the opportunity now to remind the public that our call-in number is 253-6202, and you'll go to on hold, so just wait until you're called upon, and then you'll have three minutes to speak to items on the agenda. So before we go to the phones, we have guest speakers from the incident management team, a COVID-19 update. Manager Howard.
I believe Dr. Sanders, are you on the line?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So I would like for her to share about the recent cases and the medical team's recommendations for going forward.
So as everybody sees on the dashboard, we have had an uptick in our cases, particularly over the last three weeks. I do want to point out that our goal with our policy and mitigation strategies was always to mitigate the virus. We can't completely get rid of the risk. At this time, we have excellent policies in place. The mask rule was put into place early on. The ambassadors are doing a great job helping along with the incident plan team to control our ports of entry. And I feel like Cordova is doing what needs to be done in order to slow the spread. The goal again was always to slow the spread so we didn't overwhelm our healthcare system. At the current rate, it certainly is concerning, but the healthcare system, our testing is intact, the contact tracing is intact, and we are cautious, but don't need to be implementing any further mitigation strategies.
Is there any questions for Dr. Sanders, council? I'm sorry, were you done, Dr. Sanders?
Yes.
Hey, council, were there any questions for Dr. Sanders?
This is Councilwoman Schaefer.
Councilman Schaefer.
Hi, yeah. Thanks, Dr. Sanders, for calling in. I know that there are obviously like privacy and HIPAA and all sorts of regulations about what kind of information can be released to the public. And I know there's a balance between releasing information and wanting everybody to take precautions versus if you say that, if we know that a community spread event, for example, has come from a particular incident, you don't want people to let their guard down if they weren't at that event, or whatever. I know there is a balance between what information is shared. I didn't know if you had any insight about, yeah, how you decide what information to share, what the different regulations are. I've gotten a lot of questions over the last couple of weeks about why some information is shared and why it isn't, or, yeah, so I just wanted to know if you could speak to how that is decided upon.
Certainly. So when we look at HIPAA laws and specifically HIPAA guidance, HIPAA is the Patient Privacy Act, and it guides how we disclose information, the coronavirus guidance is that we release the minimum necessary for the intended purpose. So our intended purpose is to ensure community safety and mitigate risk and stopping the spread. So early on, it made sense to give a little bit more information. Things were very isolated. We had very sporadic cases, and the public knowing exactly where those were helped reassure and not cause people to have too much fear at a time where they shouldn't need to have fear. So we felt that the minimum necessary was a little higher. And now, we know that we have community transmission. We do not know, we don't have an identified outbreak site or a place where we're asking people that were at a specific location to please be cautious of. And we know that with this community transmission, there are likely unidentified cases. Releasing additional information that could impact patient privacy doesn't add to the community safety. We just want everybody to be cautious and know that there are unidentified cases in our community.
Does that answer, Councilman Schaefer?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I've just had a lot of questions about why information, some is being shared and isn't, or why can't we know, you know, other types of information. And so I think just having an explanation that people can hear is good. So thank you.
Sure. And I will add, the state does not release information even regarding which specific community it is, communities that are less than 1,000. Being larger than that, we kind of fit in this gray area. But small pieces of information do make it very difficult when we release information to maintain patient privacy. This is something that we take very serious, and I know individuals really want to have that information, but knowing that we are absolutely, if there is something to the community's health and safety, we will disclose it.
Other questions, council? Okay, thank you, Dr. Sanders. Appreciate the update. So, and again, I do have my cellphone here, and I use it particularly to monitor for problems with the call-ins and whatnot. And so right now, I've got a caller trying to call in and saying that it's unavailable after ringing about 10 times.
We're working on it.
Okay, so they're working on it. So that number again is 253-6202, and it never fails, the system works flawlessly when you test it, and then come meeting time.
I think it's good now.
Okay, it looks like it's working now, so I'll just text this caller.
Can you tell if we have one or not?
Yes.
Yes.
We do?
Yeah.
Join? Okay, Clay.
Okay, caller, you're on the line. If you could state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Mayor Copeland, for the council, for the record, my name is Chelsea Haysman. And I'm speaking on behalf of Cordova District Fisherman United in response to the fishery disaster declaration request that we submitted to the state for the season. In 2020, our fishery saw significant reduction of time in all four districts in the Dersk, Chrisville, and Fiseries, as well as the Fiseries. Average earnings that still not fully accelerated yet are likely well below half the prior annual average. We are seeking a declaration for both 2018 and 2020 on the basis that there is precedent for a multi-year fishery disaster declaration for NOAA and in multiple other regions of the US, as well as multi-species disasters. Such examples include the Ford.
Okay, Chelsea, were you finished? Because we lost you. It stopped abruptly. Okay, it cut her off, and she's calling again. Okay, you're back on, Chelsea.
Okay, good. I'm not sure exactly where it cut out at.
It cut out, you were just saying it was a multi-year declaration from 2018 to 20, and there was a precedent set for that.
Okay, wonderful. So there is a precedent for other fishery disasters declared by NOAA for other regions in the US to be multi-year fishery disasters, including the Florida Red Tide Event, New England Groundfish, and other California fishery disasters in recent years. The impacts of this fishery disaster are significant within our community and within our region. And so I just wanted to speak to that and ask you to consider forwarding this on to the state of Alaska and the Secretary of Commerce to help get our release that they will need after this season. Thank you for giving this your careful consideration and thought.
Okay, thank you, Chelsea. That number again for the public is 253-6202. It doesn't look like we have any other callers at this time. So chairpersons of boards and commissions, do we have a CCMC Authority Board report?
I told Greg I would give the report today.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Sanders. Go ahead.
So the hospital, we have been seeing a decrease in volumes across most of our lines, including and very specifically long-term care admissions. This is consistent with what we see nationwide right now, given the pandemic, and people are not having surgeries, they're not entering, requiring rehab, and people are also fearful of long-term care. So it isn't necessarily surprising. Those losses are covered by our CARES funding. We are also using CARES funds to complete some facility projects and get updated equipment so that we can have better respiratory illness pandemic response. We still are looking good for the year for not needing any additional funds from the city.
Thank you. Any questions, council? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Dr. Sanders. And do we have a school board report?
Clay, this is Barb Zull. I'd like to report from the board, and I believe Alex was going to call in and perhaps offer some additional information, as I'm sure that people are wondering about how school is going to go forward in just the next few weeks. The administration and the board have participated in a series of meetings, board meetings, community meetings, informational meetings, to gather information about people's concerns, people's hopes, to share information about what the state has put forth in terms of guidance for reopening, what CDC has put forth in terms of guidance for reopening. And the goal is that the administration will present a plan to the board on Wednesday for the board to make a decision about. Myself and other board members have certainly heard people express worry and anxiety about how school will go forward in the fall, and also worrying anxiety that we haven't made any decisions yet. It's been a very deliberate process to go slowly, and knowing that Cordova is behind the curve in terms of cases and exposure, we really wanted to wait as long as we could to make decisions about how we were going to school in the fall. I'm hoping that the superintendent is on the line to pick up here in terms of details for those plans as they currently stand, but also reassuring people that we're gathering as much information as we can to make a good decision going forward.
Hi, this is Alex Ruston, Superintendent of 209 South Second Street. And Barbie did a great job. I don't think I have anything to add, but no. So as Barb said, we've been having a series of meetings, upwards of 40 folks from around the community, including parents, community members at large, a couple of people from the medical team here in town, staff, and students as well. So those couple of meetings have been sort of dovetailed with survey data that we've been getting in as, in addition to what Barb mentioned around the Department of Education's framework. And what we've talked about to date have been conditions for learning. That's a broad category. And under that category, there are a number of elements or subcomponents. Health and safety being, protocols being front and center, parent engagement, support services from within the community, as well as some other, a couple of other areas. And then most recently, we've talked about continuity of learning and what that might look like in a low, medium, and high-risk sort of school scenario. And we've talked about everything from learning gaps to intervention, the school schedules, delivery methods of instruction, staffing needs, and so forth. And what we're looking to kind of focus in on and discuss a little bit more about, it's really, it's probably more of an administrative sort of task than anything, but items related to connectivity of our students, and that doesn't necessarily only mean online connectivity, but it means how to maintain that connectivity that resembles some semblance of normalcy for all of us. Federal funding and flexibility in the use of federal funds, activities and travel, facility use, and so forth. So as the council is well aware, and you are no strangers to the seemingly infinite number of moving parts and pieces in working toward making a plan. You all have experience in that in your roles as city council members, with the incident command team providing the information, as well as the medical team. And it's really no different, so much so for the school district, lots of moving pieces and parts to consider. Our primary goal, or two primary objectives in planning relate to, of course, supporting the overhaul, health and safety of our students and staff, and the community as a whole. We have been scenario planning and talking through any number of situations just to try to mitigate risks and isolate the spread of the virus as best as we may be able to plan for. Three real broad categories of instructional delivery that we're talking about are online learning, in-person learning, and then what we're referring to as a blended learning sort of model. And that blended learning model may include some online delivery, as well as some in-person delivery. And each of these options or considerations have their pros, and equally, they have some cons as well. Our goal is to get students and staff in the building just as soon as we can in as safe a manner as we can. And unfortunately, that's not a straightforward, easy thing to consider. And I know that people participating in the conversations and completing survey information recognition. And we definitely appreciate the feedback that we have been getting to that end. And I would probably like to say that we definitely realize that whatever plans that we have going into the school year to start may need to shift based on what our local medical conditions are here in town. So flexibility, flexibility, flexibility is probably the single most word that has been resonating in my mind and the conversations that we've been having within the working groups and within the community. So I think with that, that's probably about as much info or detailed info as I can provide at the moment. And I am here to answer any questions, should you have any, or take any notes that you might have or suggestions.
Questions, council?
This is Councilwoman Schaefer.
Councilwoman Schaefer.
Hi, yeah, Alex and Barb, thanks to both of you for filling us in with that information. I think all of that information was really good, and it was, and I think something that's been stressful for a lot of people in the community is that there hasn't been a lot of information. And I know that you, yeah, you're going through this deliberate process, and you want to take your time before releasing any information. But as we, as a city, found out in dealing with this, things change really fast, and you're responding, and having someone on your team that has experience getting information out effectively and efficiently has really helped. Being able to deliver information to the public in a timely and effective manner, I think has really helped, has been a big piece of the response that's helped the community. And so I would encourage you, I don't know if there's funds that you can use with some of the Federal CARES Act or what, but get a public information officer of some kind, like we have at the city, on your team to help spread information you have it. Because as you said, things are probably going to change. Once a school year starts, everyone's going to have to be flexible, and getting that information out there in an effective way is going to help people adapt and respond better. So that's all I have.
Yeah, thank you for that, Councilmember Schaefer. Appreciate it. Jotted a few notes. And, you know, we recognize the importance of that, and hopefully people have seen, you know, the five or six recent pieces of information that we've put out, primarily on social media, as well as on our website. So definitely appreciate that feedback and making notes about that. Thank you.
Other questions or comments, council? Okay, Barb and Alex, thank you for the school board report update. I know it's, council's been, the whole community's been curious, so appreciate the update.
And Mrs. Barb, by much of that, I really appreciate the patience that the community has had with us. I have noticed from the notes from the city council that people had questions that have noted that they were willing to wait to hear from the school district, and I'm really grateful for that patience. And I also really appreciate Councilman Schaefer's comments. I think you're right on. The board has been talking about the importance of communication, transparency, consistency, and frequency. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did we have any other callers on the line? Okay, I just like to check before I move on. And can I just get a kind of a quick IT check? Councilman Schaefer, are you using those wireless headphones, and how are those working out?
I am using the wireless headset. I love it.
Okay, you're very clear, very clear on this end, so good. We just kind of wanted to see how those work. So we have communications, I'm sorry, we have a long consent calendar. Here, are there any items on the consent calendar that council would like to set aside?
Number five.
Okay, item five, direction to manager, negotiate with Alaska Sales and Service for a Chevy. Are there any others? Okay, I'll just move that up to, see.
Maybe 21A under new business.
Yeah, under new miscellaneous business, move it up to item 21A. Okay.
So on the remainder of those, all those items in the consent calendar, David Gleason?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Melina Meyer?
Yes.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
David Allison?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
And Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
The consent calendar is approved.
Okay, and the minutes in, were in the consent calendar, a consideration of bid got moved out as a separate item. So reports to officers. I've been quite busy. Haven't been submitting written reports, but I'll just give a little verbal update. Have been working with the Coast Guard on scheduling the Coast Guard Community Celebration. We're tentatively looking at the weekend of October 10th, 11th, probably a Friday evening or a Saturday evening. And I see that we have a new sign up front. Our manager may want to mention that in her report. And I just wanted to plant a seed with council to maybe be thinking about your thoughts on reopening City Hall for regular business, or at least the council meetings for public access as we start looking into late summer, fall, and not to, not that we need to address it, but maybe an item for the pending agenda. Would almost also like to remind the public that we do have voting available now. So the polls are open here at City Hall, and it is a secure and sanitary access and can limit interactions. A couple of times I was in City Hall today, there was nobody in line, so I encourage the public to take advantage of that opportunity. And that's, oh, one other item, I did reach out to the Marine Highway Systems staff. I'd heard that the Aurora had had some other delays. I reached out to Captain Carvalos. They have had more discovery on the steelwork. That steelwork is being extended, and he indicated that he would circle back and try to give us kind of a timeline update on that. I'd heard some rumors, they were talking about putting it back into service in April. And that would be, if the vessel's available sooner than that, then we need to get it in service here, so. That's all I had, unless there's any questions. Oh, I would also mention that I had some recent Robert's Whirls training that was really excellent, and usually it's applied to municipalities, and it was offered online. It's fairly reasonable. And they also record them, so if you're not able to attend, you can watch them later if you had a conflict that night. So Susan and I have kind of been looking at that and may bring that to council for some, for good training opportunity. City managers' report.
Just a comment.
I'm sorry, Councilman Baylor.
Yeah, so along with the training, I think let's pull in maybe the Planning and Zoning Commission and other boards and committees, even people that want to be running for council this year. I mean, let's get some people trained up.
Yeah, good point. And that, the platform we were on hosted 40 people, and it was very organized, and everybody got to participate, so that's perfectly reasonable. Any other questions or comments on my report, council? Okay, hearing none, city managers' report.
So I'll begin with the COVID and move on into topics unrelated, which is a lovely thing to consider. First and foremost, I want to give you an update on where we're at. We're obviously working very hard to get the CARES funding expended and distributed as appropriate. We have a number of projects underway, which you've approved some somewhere in front of you tonight. And we'll hopefully get things rolling here before the snow falls, obviously, for some of those hard projects that we're going to be working on that will be on the ground. We are really, really close to getting out our applications to the nonprofit sector here in Cordova so that they can apply for the grants that we set aside funds for, to help get them at least stabilized. And we'll also get our applications out for individual grants here by the beginning part of September. And those grants will all be to eligible individuals and eligible nonprofits that are residing or working here in Cordova. On another topic, AML is the Alaska Municipal League, which we are a member of, is organizing a work session with the Marine Highway Working Group to help inform them about the impacts of the ferry on our various communities. And Kathy Renfelt will be doing a presentation on our behalf, two-minute presentation, as well as all the other coastal communities, and that will happen this week. So we're still working hard to try to get ferry service stabilized. So we're still working hard to try to get ferry service stabilized in our community. We're up against, obviously, budget issues with the state, but hopefully we'll be able to finalize and help influence a schedule that will be workable for our community. Want to talk a little bit about another thing we're doing. We're starting a conversation around our community and its policing. And you will see a survey, the community will see a survey going out fairly soon, followed by some community discussions and information sessions to help all of us understand what our community does for us and allow all the community to communicate back on, on maybe some changes that we might want to make. Chief Hicks has left us unfortunately, but fortunately we have really capable staff in the police department, all willing to be flexible and, and take advantage of this opportunity to think around the national dialogue about policing and, and to really consider how the police department works for our community. So be on the lookout for that, it's launching this Friday, and we'll, we'll start to have a more public dialogue around that. And then finally, Jason Gabrielson, who for six years was our communications IT person here at City Hall, has left us as of Monday. And I took advantage of that opportunity to really work to restructure that position so it more effectively serves the community. And one of the areas that will be changing a bit is the focus from, from technology, which is going to be provided fairly exclusively by Arctic IT and someone here on the ground on a contractual level. We will now have someone on staff who will be doing public communications, really working to make sure that our interface with the community from our technology here and our meetings to press releases, our website, everything is more robust and really gets the word out so that the community's well informed. And that is it for my report.
Questions, Council? Councilman Baylor?
Yeah, well, the last two items are actually two of the items I wanted to talk to you about tonight. It sounds like you've already gone ahead with the policing. So what, what's the genesis of that? Do we have a lot of complaints of our city police department? I know the discussion for going back at least 30 years has been, do we, do we want 24/7 police coverage or 12/7? There's always been that discussion, but there's never ever been any other issue that I'm aware of. So what, what's the reasoning for spending money out of town, which also disappoints me? So what, what's that purpose all about?
Well, I think the genesis is the national conversation around Black Lives Matter. We had two or three protests here, marches that were, you know, 75 to 100 people participated. I took a number of phone calls, mostly questions about who is our police department, what are they, what is their policy on chokeholds? I mean, things like that, that I couldn't even begin to answer. And I, I realized that because the national dialogue is not settling down and we are part of, and our community members are very informed and a part of that conversation, that it would be appropriate for us to do two things. Number one is to talk about what our police do here, get feedback from the community about how they feel about the police. There's no issues as far as I can tell, but I think there's a lot of questions. And then thirdly, we, every year get presented with budgets that ask for certain, certain number of officers, and we're never quite able to fill those positions. And yet there is a need in the community for certain kinds of services. I had more than one call recently about an individual that had been arrested that might have needed alternative services than police intervention. And there was concern that that individual didn't belong in a jail cell but needed additional assistance. So that also brought up, you know, maybe there's other types of personnel we could have in our police department, what would that look like? So we're going to be engaging mental health, there's, there's a group in town that has conversations around mental health, that meets regularly, they're going to be involved. I've spoken with Nate, our interim chief, about some of his ideas. We've talked about concerns and I think there's a general interest on the part of the community as communicated to me, as well as the police department, now that we have a changing of the guard. Are there things that we could do differently? Are there money-saving opportunities? Are there ways that we could maybe fill positions in the police department that, not with officers, but by others who could provide those services? So that's the genesis and, and we're spending about $2,500 on consultants and personnel who can help get this on the ground, get the communication feedback from the community and, and get the information back to the community. So that's, that is that, and I'm using my city manager fund to do that.
And the other question I had was on the job, the Public Communications Special Project Manager. I don't know what the special projects are, but so is this basically, this position is going to replace Jason's position and there will not be a second hire after this? This is, there's going to be one hire?
Yes, it's just one hire. And I'm just shifting to what I perceive to be our needs right now, and, and that came after conversation with Jason. We have a job description for him, but when I actually started chatting with him about his position, I realized he had basically one of those Frankenstein jobs where, oh, you can do that here, you do that, you do this, do that. And, and there was really no way for us to fill that role that he was playing with the job description we had. So I shifted it, talked to him extensively, talked to others and said, okay, what do we need? And if this COVID emergency has brought one thing to mind is that we are not as adept and ready to respond to community needs as we should be. And there's a lot of public information needs that haven't been met as well as they could be. So talked to Arctic IT and for no extra money, they're ready to step in and provide a more robust role for us here. And I think, I think we'll be happy with the, with the change.
Thank you, that was my concern, that we weren't creating a whole nother job, but very good, thank you.
Council, any questions online?
Yeah, this is Melina.
Vice Mayor Meyer.
It's not so much of a question, but I, I did really like the idea of having a community survey based off of our police or public safety in general, how we administer that. I think that's something that I haven't seen in my lifetime of any kind of survey about how policing and kind of how Councilmember Baylor said, like we have talked about maybe not 24-hour coverage and stuff. And I think if the survey could cover, cover some of that and also how we do policing, I like the idea of we're a really small community, so getting input from our community about how we do public safety, I think should happen pretty frequently. So I think that's good. And then also the IT staff change, I think that's a good kind of shift also. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Meyer. Any other questions for City Manager? And then Helen, was there going to be a verbal report on the financials or are they just referred to?
I was going to defer to Ken.
Okay.
Did you want to speak, have any additional things to add or if there's any questions around the financials? One thing I do want to let you know is we're going to do a work session once we get more data from the second quarter, sales tax returns and all that sort of thing, so that you guys have an update on that. But I think Ken has an update that he can share a little bit with you on that. But as we head into budget cycle again, the impacts of COVID are starting to be clearer, sort of, kind of not really. We, you know, of course have had some state cuts, we've had an influx of funds from the CARES Fund, which is replacing some of the resources that we would normally use for our police and health responses. But there's a lot of other moving parts and pieces, so I'd like to schedule a work session in, are we in August already? Hold on, Mark.
We'll talk pending agenda, I think we said the second August meeting before that.
And, and that will give you a really clear sense of exactly where we are as of July 30th. Well, Ken can talk here.
July 31st or 30th, yes. Actually, I do have some flash numbers, some very quick numbers for July, or for, to the end of July, from the January 1st to July, the end of July. Our sales tax, our sales and use tax was very comparable to last year, which was surprising. And it was actually up, whereas the ATM or alcohol, alcohol, tobacco, and marijuana was not as good, good as budgeted. The other thing for July, our investment actually has made up all the losses, so our investment balance is higher than it was December 31st. So that's a good thing. But yes, having, going more in detail at the work session in the third week of August would be, I'd really like to do that, give you more detail. Any questions for this report?
Council, any questions on the June financials? Councilman Baylor?
Not so much on the June financials, but you know, we've been, we've been on autopilot with our funds there. And I know we've spoke before, you had some thoughts and ideas about looking at other companies to handle those funds and I think it's about time we start looking at that a little bit harder. We're coming into the fall, if we put something out, then we perhaps would have everybody here at a meeting after fishing to kind of look at some of those things. So I know it's on our pending agenda calendar, but I don't know what your thoughts are.
Okay, actually, the more I'm looking at it, I, I think we can actually save money by not going to an investment. I don't know what the charter says or, or the, the code, but if we put it into, if we put things in index funds, it just lets it, we don't really, once we make the decision what index funds we need, we don't really need a manager. So that's one of my thoughts, I guess.
Yeah, well, I think it needs to kind of move forward and we need to stop kicking the can down the road and make some decisions.
I think that will be something that can be discussed at the work session for sure.
Other questions, Council, the City Manager or Finance Report? Okay, hearing none, Clerk's Report.
I have a written report in the packet, I can answer any questions, if anybody has any.
Are there any questions for the City Clerk? Okay, hearing none, we have departmental quarterly reports. Are there any Council comments or questions on the staff reports?
This is Sherman.
We've got two there, I'll take Councilman Sherman and then Councilman Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor, sorry again. I just wanted to thank the staff for putting in the reports. I know it takes time off of their day and I do read them and I wanted them to know that. Also going to really compliment the library on all their online and virtual programs that they came up with this summer. Compared to some of the other libraries in the state, I haven't seen this kind of output. And so I was really impressed with that. I also know they're using their downtime to some really good housekeeping efforts in the library and just wanted to note that.
Thank you, Councilman Schaefer.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank staff for submitting the quarterly reports and all of the hard work adapting to the COVID situation and adapting to all the changing regulations and whatnot. So thank you, good job. The community really appreciates it, I appreciate it.
This is Melina.
Vice Mayor Meyer.
I was trying to go down to my notes, but actually it was on the City Clerk's Report. I just wanted to mention one little thing that you could look into too for this, different way for us to do our local election. I was noticing your report, you had the ballot drop-off, I really liked that idea. And a few other things you had on there. One thing that I was thinking about was when the absentee or the voting ones are counted, so like if they went into that box, but maybe counted the election day or the week after the election. I don't know if you have an answer to that, but that was just something that came up in my train of thought, maybe that the absentee voting ones can be, if you have them, maybe they can be counted on election day and then also do the week, or I don't know how that would all work out, but that was something that stuck out. And then echo the comments before me, really appreciate all the time that goes into these quarterly reports. Thanks.
Susan?
Yes, as a matter of fact, Tina and I were just talking about that. Possibly the absentee by mail that get put in the drop box could be counted on election day, but any that are getting mailed in will still have to be the eight days later because they'll get, they'll have to be postmarked by election day and I'll still have to give enough time for them to be returned. So it might increase the number of ballots we do get to count on election day, but it won't make it, we're still going to have to do the eight days later.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Baylor.
Yeah, I want to thank staff too for the reports and then kind of zeroing in on Harbor Masters' Report. They're on page 41, I see you delivered a little over 4,000 gallons of used oil to the high school. That's, that's nice that they're doing that. I know we were told in the past they were burning oil with the old staff, but there weren't any deliveries, so that's interesting that for getting rid of some of that oil. The other thing I thought is chipped ice at Cordova Center Lower Steps, why, why is the harbor chipping ice on the?
That's full of jam and melon.
Okay. So the North Harbor dumpster, is there a solution there other than, I mean, it's, you got one dumpster there, would it help to put two or is this just an issue you're always going to have to deal with?
Always an issue. I mean, it's between the... It's always an issue with any time of year, really. I mean, it happens in the winter, it happens in the summer. I mean, a lot of people like to blame it on one person or the other. It just happens. We have in the summer, three over here, three over on the north side and one in the shipyard. So I mean, we just reduce some in the winter, but I don't know, it's, it's a tough one.
No solutions, huh?
I haven't, unless you lock it up and then it goes everywhere else.
Yeah.
Yeah, it ends up out the road and on the sides of the road, so yeah. Takes a little extra time, but that's what we got to do.
I know, we talked about one time that the harbor gets charged per dump, correct?
Correct.
I think at one time there was a little bit of discussion about just charging the harbor their historic flat rate and putting more dumpsters down there so we didn't have this mess. Did that ever get traction? Would it help or would you just have more dumpsters with more mess?
I think the more you put down there, the more trash they'll bring.
Okay.
I mean, you know, it's, the harbor users pay for those dumpsters, but the public itself brings the dumpsters. I mean, unless you put someone standing there telling them not to.
Yeah, okay.
Video camera.
Thanks.
We're getting there with the cameras.
This is Councilman Schaefer, I have a follow-up question about the dumpsters.
Councilman Schaefer, yeah.
Do people use, is that texting, like text that this dumpster is full thing, does that get used?
I know it has, but I mean, they text the bailer, they don't, or, well, I don't know actually who they text, they don't text me.
Oh, that's of course, okay, yeah, thank you.
Other questions or comments on staff reports, Council?
Yeah, this is Melina, I'll comment about some dumpsters.
Vice Mayor Meyer.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking, yeah, it'd be nice to see if there's some kind of solution there. You know, it's more dumped it up, more people bring trash, I understand all of that, but we don't really want trash on the ground or anywhere else. We do want a place for people to put them. And I did kind of like that idea that Baylor said, maybe we could charge the harbor a flat rate, put more dumpsters down there so that trash is going there. It's not going to go to the harbor dumpster, it's going to go into someone else's dumpster. So someone's paid paying for it no matter what and residents, they pay at their house, businesses pay for the dumpsters, Harbor Master does. I think that at the harbor, we could do something like a purse blot fee or transient ones and just have it be a base price and get more dumpsters rather than having to clean up for that or not have areas. It seems like policing is more work than just getting some more dumpsters down there.
Okay, thank you. Other comments or questions, counsel, on staff reports?
I've got one quick question for, I'm having a brain moment here. On the city court. Thank you. Sorry about that, folks. I'm lost the other living brain cell momentarily. Anyway, my question was on absentee voting. There's now national questions on delivery times with the postal service with lack of funding and system changes with the post office. Are we still comfortable that seven days won't allow everybody's vote to be counted here absentee-wise?
Yeah, that's, I mean, so I'm rewriting Title II as we speak, or the city attorney is with my input. I may consider extending that because some of the snowbirds that we usually send our ballots to, I don't always get those back, I'll tell you that. But sometimes, I never get them back. It's not like they were late, they just didn't come back. They chose not to do it or whatever. Yeah, extending that might be an option, might be a smart idea. I could, we could also request or suggest that they use priority mail if they're going to mail them back. I mean, at this point, we don't pay for the return postage, so that could be another option to put in there. A suggestion for priority mail or something other than just first class.
It would be interesting to see how the mail's actually flowing now, because I actually had something mailed locally to me yesterday, and I received it today. And I thought the mail used to route through Anchorage, and I don't know if that's changed, but.
Yeah.
Okay, good point, Councilman Garden.
I do love the idea of local by mail, that they can just drop them right here, and we're getting that ballot box for that, so.
Yeah, because that helps have more of the votes in in a timely manner. If they put their mail-in ballots in the drop box, they can actually be included in the count. Okay. Other questions or comments on staff reports? Counsel?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is Allison.
Councilman Allison.
Just a comment there for Susan. I just sent a priority mail letter, just a, it was a title for Grandpa Carter, Montana, and it took eight days to get there. So that was priority mail. So just saying.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to ask, sorry.
Sorry, Councilman Schaefer.
At the national level, they're recommending two weeks lead time to get your ballot in for the mail.
That would throw a lot of things for a loop, but we could, we'll consider it. Certainly, I'll consider it.
Wow. Okay, because that's the fine and code. I was just going through a quick thought process of whether that could be a line on the emergency declaration that ballots could be such and such because of pandemic delays. But anyway, other questions or comments, counsel, on staff reports? All right, hearing none. There's correspondence in the packet. You see, there was a fish and game draft distribution plan for distribution of the Pacific Cod disaster. No, CDFU is going to be submitting correspondence. If counsel would like city to do that, you might just mention that. But any questions or comments on the correspondence? Okay, hearing none. Ordinances and resolutions. We have Resolution 08-20-32, which is a resolution of the Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, updating the 2020 land disposal maps by making approximately 1,750 square foot area corresponding with the eastern half of Lot 3, Block 17, original town site available.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Baylor, and that was second Sherman?
Correct.
Councilman Baylor, would you like to speak to your motion?
I guess I'll support what the Plan Zoning Commission come up with and make it available. I think that should, even though it possibly would not be any use to anybody else but this particular landlord, I think it still should be put out for public process. I think we should probably do that from now on in light of the last go-around that we had. And then I'd like to see it, when it is sold, that it's part of the contingency that it gets, if it gets sold to that adjoining lot, that it, the lot line goes away on paper. You know, that doesn't remain as two lots. So that would be my session. Otherwise, I'll support the motion. Sherman, second?
Yes, I would, I'm in favor of making this lot available. I know it's been on the market for a really, really, really long time. I would agree with Councilman Baylor that it should go out for public. I think that's a great process to do, and again, cleaning up the lot lines as they are. Cleaning those up would be good as well. I'm in support of it.
Okay, and I'll go through the list for discussion. Councilman Allison.
No comment. Thank you. I support it. I think it's a good deal, so.
Councilman Schaefer.
I'm also supportive of making the land available.
Councilman Gleason.
Same here. I'm in support.
Vice Mayor Meyer.
Yeah, same. I'm in favor of making it available.
Councilman Gard.
Yes, I'm in favor of making it available. And I don't necessarily have an issue with putting it out to the public, but we can't very well say we're going to put it out. Better proposal by anybody in the public and then tell them the lot lines have to go away between that and the citizen to put in the proposal that would like to buy it, but don't see a joining lot.
Susan, is there a procedural item?
No, I just mean that will be the discussion for item 22, more.
Yeah, so the actual means of, okay.
This was just to make it available.
This is to make it available, and then item 22 is the actual disposal. Okay, it sounds like counsel's ready to vote on this one. Roll call, please.
Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
Molina Meyer?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
David Allison?
Yes.
And David Gleason?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Okay, next item is Resolution 08-20-33, which is a resolution of the Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, ratifying the city's contract for COVID-19 mitigation services with Baylor's cabinet and tram in the amount of $5,038.78. Councilman Baylor had declared a conflict on this item for public record. We have a motion, Gleason. Have a second Sherman. So Gleason, to your motion.
Speak into the mic, please.
I'm sorry. I'm in favor of doing this. I mean, he did the work, so.
Okay, Councilman Sherman, to your second.
Yes, all right, unusual circumstance, but all, but Councilman Baylor stepped up to the podium because of the business that they worked, and we should honor that, agree that we should honor his work.
Okay, and then discussion in order. Councilman Schaefer.
Just for public record, does the city manager mind giving a very brief rundown of services performed?
Sure. And I'm going to take full responsibility for basically overlooking in the COVID emergency, our code, and the need for people who are serving on our council to not engage in contracts. We were in a crisis mode, needing to get the harbor put in place. The incident command team had a volunteer who I talked to, and I said, we got to do something. It's got to be done yesterday. He went out and got the best people he possibly could to get the work done as quickly as possible, as efficiently as possible, to make the community and the harbor in particular safe. And after the fact, we realized that we had created a conflict with Tom Baylor, who is serving on our council. So all I can say is that this was a totally COVID-related emergency, need to get it done now thing, and Mr. Baylor stepped up and did the work. I also think that this, this conflict raises the question of whether or not our code gives us the flexibility to honor the commitment that individuals in our community have to serve on our council, on our boards, on our commissions, and also do business in town. It creates an awkward conflict where people may not be able to serve our community because they have businesses. So that's something that I would like to see counsel look at in the future. But in the, in the short term, this resolution acknowledges the emergency, acknowledges that this is a departure from what our, our code would ask us to follow. And I totally support us honoring this.
Okay, thanks for that background, Helen. And then what was the actual scope of work?
Scope of work was harbor plumbing, getting all the sinks and various hand washing stations in, and making sure that all the, the things needed for, the recommendations for hand sanitation and other things like that were available to any user in the harbor.
Okay, great. Thank you. Does that answer, answer the question, Councilman Schaefer, for the record?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I get it out? Everybody's on the same page.
Okay, great.
I'll be voting supportive of it. Yeah, weird circumstances.
Okay, thank you. And then Councilman Baylor's conflicted. Councilman Gard, discussion.
We were all scrambling during those days trying to figure out what was going on. And I thank Councilman Baylor for stepping up and helping the community out. I'll be in support of this.
Councilman Allison.
Yeah, I'll support this as well. Thank Tom, too, for doing that. But I was, I was going to make the comment that the manager made there regarding, regarding the, you know, if our code doesn't work for us, then let's make it work. If it's a charter and we have a vote on it, let's, let's make it work for us. It's kind of ridiculous that you can't, can't hire the best person for the job just because of that, you know. The first, first page or two of the, or maybe it's just paragraph or two. But anyway, I thought we were sitting in dump jail when I was reading back. And that just, that just doesn't make any sense at all. So I'm certainly in favor of, of changing whatever needs to be changed to make it work for us in the future. So, but certainly, certainly it is work. It needs to get paid for, and I support it. Obviously, there's a way around the code that we have right now. We're doing it tonight. But, but we need to make the code work for us, work for the community better. So let's, let's get it changed.
Okay, thanks, Councilman Allison. I made a note here to bring that up during pending agenda, and I know the manager and clerk have had a similar discussion. So thank you. And comments, Vice Mayor Meyer, or discussion, sorry, to the motion.
Yeah, thank you, Helen, for giving the kind of summary of the work that was done. I'm kind of wondering if on the resolution on the third, whereas, where it has the amount and then in services, I know when Baylor was saying at the beginning, talking about his conflict there, he said it was for services and materials. And if that was for services and materials, maybe it should be added in there.
Is that a amendment?
I'm sure that it's, if the manager wants to verify that it was for services and materials.
Yes, I'm sure it was.
Yeah, I'm sure it was, too. So yeah, I would like to amend it to say the amount and then say in services and materials.
Okay, have a motion to amend to change to services and materials?
Second, Sherman.
Have a second Sherman. Sherman, would you like to speak to the second?
No, I agree that it would be a proper amendment to make.
Okay, and I'll ask the councilman other than Baylor, is there any objection to that amendment or any discussion on the amendment? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, vote on the amendment. Let's, Councilman Baylor.
Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Tom Baylor's conflicted. Molina Meyer?
Yes.
David Allison?
Yes.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
And David Gleason?
Yes.
The amendment carries six, zero.
Okay, the amendment carries. Is there any further discussion on the main motion as amended? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, vote. Let's, Councilman Baylor.
David Allison?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman?
Yeah.
Molina Meyer?
Yes.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
And David Gleason?
Yes.
Motion carries six, zero.
Okay, we didn't have unfinished business on the agenda, but we moved item five from the consent calendar to, or consent agenda to item 21A on the new and miscellaneous business. And that item was the direction to the manager to negotiate with Alaska Sales and Service for a Chevy 2500 HD Silverado. And Councilman Baylor requested that change. Would you like to make a motion for discussion or?
Yeah, if I can find the page again. I moved it.
It was on page 10, I think.
Yeah. I guess I'd move to direct the city manager to negotiate a contract with Alaska Sales and Service to provide for one 2020 Chevy 2500 HD Silverado double cab pickup for the amount of $33,695.
One second.
Have a motion, Baylor. Second, Gleason. Baylor, to your motion.
I, you know, I don't have a problem with getting the truck. They need a truck. That's fine. I guess the only question I had was the Silverado package. Generally, that's the higher-end package. And I, for my own use and most of the other contractors in town, they like to get the plain jane trucks, vinyl floor mats, and crank down windows if we can get them. Because as the years go by, especially in this country, that all those electronics and things start to go. So maybe this is the only truck that was available, but I guess that was the question I asked. Why are we getting one with such a high-end package? Or maybe I'm wrong on the Chevys. I don't know as well. But that's my question.
I believe I can speak to that because I have bought a truck through the DOT system.
Hang on. Is Sam on the line, or?
Okay.
I'll speak from my experience of buying a truck for the harbor. Is, you buy it from the state site, and that's like the lowest model. They, Silverado is just, it doesn't have all the carpet in it and the CD player and all that stuff in it. It's just like, we have the XL, which still has power windows and power mirrors. But that's the basic truck. That's as low as you go when you go through the state site.
Okay, it was by, I was assumed the Silverado was the higher-end one, so I was wrong.
I think if Sam called, she'd probably say the same thing. Everything I looked at on there, there is no real high-end trucks on there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I support it 100%.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Gleason, to your second.
Yeah, I'm in favor. I just have one question. The water and sewer, they, they got the money to buy the.
I was about to do that.
I mean, they are, we're not putting any, we're not putting any money out. They're going.
We got you, Sam.
They're going to put all the money out.
Yes.
Put a dime out. Okay.
Sam, do you want to speak to that?
I could, I didn't hear what his question was.
The question, the question, Sam, was, does the Water and Sewer Department have the money to take this out of their budget and not hit the general fund?
Yep. That's what the codes and the memo, they're split between Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund.
Okay, thank you. And then the earlier, earlier question was, is, is this a higher-end model that might not hold up as well with all the electric? not hold up as well with all the electronics and carpet and stuff, or is it more of a stripped-down model with the vinyl and whatnot that holds up better in Cordova?
Uh, it, it's, it's a working truck, but it's really difficult to get total vinyl anymore. I'm not sure if it has power windows and stuff, but it is a, you know, it's not like the King Ranch version.
Gotcha. Yeah, Tony had kind of helped out a little bit. He's been on the state's procurement site, and they generally, they're the stripped-down service model, so. Okay, so we've had Baylor and Gleason discussion, both in favor, but with questions. And I'll go through the list for discussion. Vice Mayor Meyer?
No questions or comments.
Councilman Gard?
Um, no more questions, I'm in favor.
Councilman Schaefer?
No questions, I'm also in favor.
Councilman Sherman?
No questions, I'm also in favor.
Councilman Allison?
Yeah, I don't, I'm in favor of it, but I do have just one general comment is, is it's part of the budget, you know, we budgeted for it in the discussion. Probably have had any questions on it, should it take place at the, at the budget session, but my, my comment is that in the description of, of the item here on the agenda, it seemed to, seemed to just, you know, it's a 2007 or 2008 model that they're replacing, and it's on the list for replacing. And I'd just like to see a little bit more, you know, we're, we're, we're spending an hour a week trying to maintain this thing, or we've got a $15,000 repair coming up if we keep this one, or something along those lines, just because it's, you know, my truck, I think it's pretty brand new, and it's a 2005, so. Anyway, just a comment for the future that, you know, put a reason in there besides that it's, it's on the list to replace, and it's 15 years old, so. Anyway, but I support it, it was approved at the budget time, and this is what they're getting, so I'm in favor of it.
Okay, I think you've heard all of council speak in favor of it, so it sounds like you're ready for a roll call vote.
Molina Meyer? David Allison?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
David Gleason?
Yes.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, the next item, first item, a new and miscellaneous business, is council action on disposal and method of disposal for the east half of Lot 3, block 17, original town site.
So moved.
Well, there's, you have to put.
Okay, there's, I think we need to hear the method of disposal.
Correct.
In the motion, so that's page 79.
Invite, invite sealed bids to lease or purchase the property would be my recommendation on the motion.
Okay.
Bids, not proposals? I mean, it could be either.
Yeah, bids or proposals.
Yeah, there's two different kinds. We usually do proposals, but bids is okay too.
Yeah, let's, let's number two there, request sealed bids to lease or purchase the property, sealed proposals to lease or purchase property.
Okay, have motion to solicit.
Sealed proposal.
Sealed proposals, thank you. Is that your second, Councilman Gleason?
What, was that an amendment?
No, that's, no, 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 he's just stating the motion.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I guess. I, I, I did have a question, but I'll wait until we.
Okay, you don't have to second, I just.
Well, I'll second it for the, for the purposes of discussion. Are we, are we doing the bids because you want it to go out to the whole town? Is that what the intention is?
Yeah, I guess if I'm.
I just want clarification on that.
Yeah, the reason, I, I think we're moving forward, I think, in all possible, we should allow the public to, to look at this and give an opportunity, all pieces of property, unless there's a situation where a person literally has the backhoe ready to go, and they're the only ones that could use it, and they need to get going on, and need to build, a special circumstance, but I think what we saw on the last piece of property on Copper River Highway, I think had we gone out to, to bid, we would have had a baseline of who's all interested in it and what they're willing to do. And if we would end up with just one person, that might have, might have made a difference in the way we approached the sale of that property. So although this is probably not use, useful to anybody but the adjoining landowner, there's no rush, there's no reason that they have to get this tomorrow, he's not going to build on it. So I would recommend moving forward whenever we can to allow the public process to, to go out, so that would be my preference.
Okay, so can I ask Leif a question?
Yeah, discussion.
So in the meeting that the planning.
I'll give you the mic, please.
Oh, in the meeting that the planning and zoning had, Tom McGann said, or Leif actually said, Leif actually said that Lot 3 can, I gotta make sure I'm talking on the right line here. Lot 3 would be, would already be considered non-conforming as it was under 4,000 square feet, which is the minimum lot size. And then McGann said that if it is, if it is non-conforming, then the neighboring property owners would be the only people who could purchase the property. So if we say this, is that, is, is what you said is correct? Leif?
Yeah, because it's, it's kind of a unique piece of property in that it is non-conforming. It's, I think it's 1,750 square feet, so, you know, really, the neighboring property owners would be the only ones to buy it. We did this with a lot a few years ago where we put it out for a request for proposals, even though it really, you know, wouldn't be bought by someone who did not own land in the area. And part of the reasoning was what Tom said, where it was to get, just have it out in the public, have it open, you know, it is a request for proposals, but there are unique considerations on the specific piece of property. So that kind of makes sense with this one. But yeah, it's non-conforming, it's not as though if you did select to have it go out for proposals, someone unrelated to the property owners would be able to, you know, put together a proposal that they would then get the property.
So are we wasting, would it be a waste of our time to do it to the public, or is this something we need to follow that?
Well, that's your decision. There will be additional costs for advertising, but those will be paid by the eventual purchaser.
Okay, well.
If I could, clerk, find something.
You've spoken once to the motion.
Well, it's just that the statement that he made, I don't believe is totally accurate. Non-conforming lot means that you can't build on it normally, but it doesn't mean you can't buy it and put a Connex on it, park your boat on it.
Yeah, that's correct.
Or do anything else.
Okay.
And that, that is, that has value in this town, so just to clarify that.
I kind of feel like, and I want to check with Susan, I kind of like procedurally, I almost should mention this, because I think it's kind of germane to council's decision in terms of the related party.
Well, Holly had said, what about that? I don't know what you want us to say.
Well, I was just thinking about interjecting that because of the role on a board and commission that that may factor.
It didn't, no.
Okay.
Attorney told us we're okay.
Okay, that's right. Okay, good. All right.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't doing something we were gonna have to undo in a few minutes, so that's all. I would support.
Sounds like no.
I would second it.
Okay. So I'll go through the list for discussion, and Councilman Allison.
Yeah, I'm okay with, with putting it out for proposals, right? We were, had proposals, not bids.
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah, I, I'm okay with that, you know, again, I agree with everybody's statement that Mr. Coons is probably the only one that can really utilize the property, but, but, you know, everybody needs a fair shot at it, I guess, so put it out there and see what happens.
Vice Mayor Meyer, discussion.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it going out to proposal. I never really did like the, in the same meeting when we make a plot of land that was marked unavailable, available, and then negotiate directly with the person who asked to make it available from unavailable. So I think going out for proposals is a good way of doing things, everything transparent, and gives people a shot and get any kind of proposal that we might not even have thought of, the use of that property. I did have a question for Leif about the cost incurred for having something go out to proposal, there are different levels of how you market or bring this out, or to get proposals from.
Yeah, we usually advertise in the newspaper and the radio. Those are the places that we advertise that have costs associated with it. And then, I mean, it's on our webpage and in our e-news, so it's also done internally.
Okay, and then a follow-up question for that too, is how long do we normally have something go out to proposal for? How long do we advertise for?
Advertise for 30 days.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think that's, I think a cost that we incur, and I think it's property that the city owns, so I think that we should have it go out to proposal.
I just remind council from a recent transaction that even though it's direct negotiation, those costs can vary widely with how long the negotiations take, how many times council has to consider it, how much staff time gets poured into it, so. Councilman Schaefer?
I'm all in favor of it going out to proposal. Give the, you know, adjacent landowner and any others who are in town, if they, and even shot at, yeah, getting the land, so I'm in favor of it.
Councilman Gard?
In theory, I'd be in favor of any property the city owns going out for proposal or being done with as much input from anyone in the community that may want it. But this is a little weird and convoluted in that it's a available lot, although the property may have some value, just be a landing spot or something. But we're also in the same thing, talking about dissolving lot lines and adding it to it, so if I decided I wanted to buy it, but I have to dissolve the lot lines and then add it to my property elsewhere in the city, for what? I mean, we have to have an even playing field. You know, everybody needs to be treated equally, and we can't expect one person to do something that we're not expecting other buyers to do.
Yeah, I don't think that's an element to this motion. Okay, I think I heard in favor. Councilman Sherman, discussion?
Yes, I'm, I'm in favor of the motion and putting it out and requesting to proposal. I think it's an awkward piece of property, I'm very familiar with it. I, I think it just behooves the city to put it into public hands, and I would hope that we can accommodate the neighborhood, but I'll be voting in favor of it.
Okay, I think I've heard all seven councils speak in favor, so a roll call vote.
Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
David Gleason?
Yes.
Molina Meyer?
Yes.
David Allison?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, the next item is a discussion of the COVID-19 emergency response. I'll just, maybe I will go ahead and go through council in a checklist order here, if there's any discussion items you'd like to bring up regarding the pandemic. Councilman Schaefer?
Hi, thank you. I have a couple questions about the incident command currently, namely, I was just wondering how often the incident command team is meeting these days. We were, you know, still in the planning and preparing and gearing up phase, they're meeting every day, and we were getting daily updates, which we definitely don't need at this point. I was just wondering, you know, what the current meeting structure was, or how often they were touching base and stuff like that.
Manager Howard?
We're meeting weekly, every Wednesday. However, we are getting ready to go into, we're entering what is being called a demobilization phase. I think the term's a little misleading because it implies that we're going away, but we're just shifting from a full incident command team with all parts and pieces covered, you know, 12 different departments, more or less, running from who's gonna, you know, set up the, the emergency shelters and who's gonna do this. We're no longer needing some of those things, so we're taking them off the table, we're demobilizing them, putting equipment and things away, cleaning up spaces. And we're really now starting to focus on the medical team and the public information team, and the ambassadors and others that are needed for ports of entry. So that will be the more condensed version of the incident command team. We will continue to meet weekly, and so we're moving in that direction. Of course, if at any point in time more resources are needed on the ground, we'll quickly reinvigorate the full team and make sure that everyone's needs are being met.
You had a second question, Councilman Schaefer?
Yeah, I mean, would it be a lot of us to work to send out the bullet point notes from the weekly meeting or some kind of condensed, this update to council? I guess I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that, but I just feel like we went from getting so much information every day, and now we're not getting very much beyond the public information that's being put out, which is good, but.
Quite frankly, that's.
I think it'd be nice to have bullet points.
So, so the incident command team basically says, you know, asks each group if they have anything to report, and lately, the only teams that are reporting are public information and the medical team. So with Dr. Sanders providing that medical update, it really is about numbers at this point. Do we have any cases? Everything is in play, so there's really not a lot to report. I certainly can do a little update, but it, it probably will be along the lines of we had six cases this week, or we had zero cases this week, and we no longer have the school as an alternative care site, or something like that, which I'm happy to do. There's really no notes coming out of those meetings.
Okay, then never mind.
I think this might, this might help Councilman Schaefer, just because I sat in on the meeting this morning at 10:00 AM. The discussion was about sharing information and how and when, because the incident team was getting some of the same comments about we changed terminology from fishing processor to fishing industry, what does that mean, and so forth, and then making announcements at 6:00 at night with very minimal information, when really maybe that information. So that really is just all that, so the actual information that comes out of the meeting is, is what ends up being posted on the dashboard and, and the public service announcements.
And I just want to also, in your packet, right up front, page three through page nine or 10, is the incident command's structure. And on page nine, there's a demobilization plan with dates, and that is going to talk about what the focus is at this moment around demobilization and what that means. So at least there's a little bit of information around that, and that is truly the focus of the incident command team at this point, if it's not directly related to the medical team response. But I will say that I can certainly give you updates, and I, we can push out those press releases to you as well, so that you get them as quickly as everybody else does, if not sooner.
Yeah, I mean, and if there's nothing that's, if update, then don't go searching for stuff to send us. I just didn't know what the, like, status of the meeting and stuff was, so this is helpful.
Sure, yeah, we're meeting weekly.
Good question. So Vice Mayor Meyer? COVID-19 emergency response discussion?
I guess going in, I had the same question as Ann there about those meetings and the notes to go with it. That does sound like that it's more, not much to report, and what is, that is being reported is being pushed.
reported is being pushed to the public in those releases. Uh, so maybe just something from the manager, um, that's just a quick email, kind of just saying that they met today and um maybe just a recap of it, maybe not full-on notes of all the meetings, just who's involved and um how it's going would be nice to have, but besides that, I don't have anything else to comment on. Thanks.
Uh, Councilman Allison?
Uh, no, just thanks, continued thanks and appreciation for all the work everybody's doing. I know it's a lot of extra work and appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Sherman?
Yeah, it is a lot of extra work. Um, so I was just gonna comment that uh the PIO team did meet today and, and we have a lot of the same questions um that other council members have had, just about the dashboard and the timing of the press releases. And I think tomorrow you'll see a clear, concise, kind of standardized form come out that will um address all those issues and kind of um solve some of the social media rampage that goes on. So I'm looking forward to that little change tomorrow.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Baylor?
Yeah, they uh, I guess I'm gonna wrap some of these comments here along in my council comments, since we're kind of talk about information. Um, as far as the projects that, you know, the, some of them got discussed here at council level that we can spend the COVID money on, uh, such as the sinks in the harbor, uh, the new um shower stalls, modular shower stalls, I guess you'd call them for the camper park. Um, evidently, we're not doing something at Nirvana Park. I think uh Councilman Allison and myself both several meetings ago asked to be kept update on this. Um, I think letting us know what's going on, if there's a, if we're not doing uh Nirvana Park bathroom, which only requires a water and sewer line, as far as I know, then, then that's fine, but a quick memo to council people of we're not gonna do this or we are gonna do it, why we're not gonna do it, I think would be helpful, because we get questions. Um, we're not, not really knowing what's going on until it actually comes out to bid. Um, that would be helpful. Uh, you know, and tying that into why, uh, you know, a little announcement at the, I'll, I'll save those for the council comments, but on these projects, I think it'd be helpful to know what's going on ahead of time, just a little blip, that this is what we're gonna do or we're thinking about doing or we're not gonna do. Um, because we certainly, at least I do, I guess more since I'm in the construction part of things, get questioned all the time on what's moving forward and what's not. But, but yeah, thanks to everybody, their, their hard work and especially the, the hospital and staff and everybody down there, that's outstanding.
Uh, Manager Howard?
I just wanted to respond, um, thank you um for that question. Um, the Nirvana Park project, um, we were proceeding with that and then there was some question um raised um from members of um NVE or the village, um, who were concerned that um we were um potentially treading on um sacred land um by using, by, by installing something that's permanent. So um rather than head into murky waters there, um, we decided to um withdraw from that project.
Yeah, so it's, it's just little updates like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely, we can do that.
Okay, yeah, thanks for uh, for that live update there. Um, Councilman Gard, uh, COVID-19 discussion?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I don't know if this is the appropriate time or setting for this, and I don't know that I have all my information, but I heard figures of north of a million and a half, 1.8, ten or six in my mind for what costs are for the average school district for COVID-19 in America right now. And I think our school districts received a couple hundred thousand in Cares money for this. So that might be something we need to take a look at. I don't know if we need a joint meeting that we never had before when we wanted to do a joint meeting or what, but there may be some fairly substantial financial needs out there that we're not all fully aware of yet.
Uh, Manager Howard?
I just um want to respond to, to one thing, um, and I think it relates back to um Council and Sherman's, I mean, um, I forget who, who, no, someone else mentioned about public communication. I have offered up our contracted public information person, um, who was um Director of Communications for the Anchorage School District. Um, so I've made her available at no charge to the school district because, as was noted, um, public information is such a huge part of this entire COVID response. Um, so I want to share that. And then secondly, um, we did budget out pretty much every single penny of the $3.4 million that we have available to us and have to expend um as of December 30th of this calendar year. So um we can potentially carve out some parts and pieces, but we don't have substantial resources um available to us for school district response. Um, but we certainly could have that conversation and um we would need to have it sooner than later because we're um realizing that December 30th is fast approaching and we have to, again, have expended and justified every expense that we've made um with those COVID resources.
So Councilman Gard, this is um maybe a good uh topic for the August discussion of the financials, when you get a look at your cash flows and stuff through then and that uh, that conversation. Just a, um, Councilman Baylor?
This is probably something you'll never hear again. Well, thank you for spending three and a half million dollars away. That was actually a concern, like, ah, let's use this money the best we can. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Gleason, uh, COVID-19 discussion?
Yeah, I just would say that we're pretty fortunate here in Cordova because you watch the news, people are struggling to be able to get tested in most of the United States. And we have Alonka and CCMC and they're doing a great job. So I'm, feel good about living here.
Yeah, I uh, I'll just share that in the discussion with Dr. Sanders, Alaska is ahead per capita of any of the other states in terms of per capita testing, and Cordova is one of the um foremost in the state, so.
Will Cordova be charging the $250 after the 11th for non-residents?
The state will require that if you are arriving without a test.
Okay, council, any uh further discussions on these uh items? And then, again, just a little tickler to think about in the coming weeks about um when council might want to think about opening up the uh city council meetings and stuff, and especially maybe as our tourism season winds down. So uh maybe that's a good segue into our pending agenda calendar. Um, Councilman Allison had uh asked that we consider to look at the related party sec, I'm calling it related party, but basically services performed by councilmen um to the city, uh, that section of code for possible revisions. Is there any objection to that going on our pending agenda? And Susan, your thoughts?
Well, it's not code, it's charter.
Or charter, sorry.
So it would have to go to an election.
Go to election item. So that would speak to a trajectory that leads us towards March and some timelines, so something we'd probably want to pick up in the September, October timeframe. Anyway.
Yeah, or maybe I'll put October, November on it.
Okay.
Is that right? Am I, so I'm adding that to an agenda to, to put on a resolution to put it on the ballot? Or might as well, because then at least we can have the discussion and do it if we want to do it.
Yeah. Is there an objection?
But there's a lot of different ways to word it. I just don't know exactly what you guys want, but.
Yeah, maybe we can have a discussion along those lines. I know there's some structures and other codes, especially in communities this small that can set certain threshold limits on uh which items have to go to council and which can just be copied in the record and so forth, so. And our attorney might have some thoughts on, or some samples.
Yeah.
Uh, so second meeting this month, um, how are we looking there? Do we have any plans or need to have a meeting from staff and, or council?
Do you have anything? Well, I wasn't gonna not have it, and we were gonna have the work session six o'clock before the regular meeting, so let's just go with the regular meeting for now.
Okay. All right. Any other?
I was going to ask if we could take, do you see, I don't like to remove things from the pending agenda until they've been said out loud here. And number three, under the items that have been referred to staff, that emergency ordinance was referred, but what we did was kind of replace it with another one that adopted the health advisory plan kind of.
Yeah.
Said, so I think it's appropriate to remove it.
Yeah, any objection, council, to removing that item off pending agenda, item three?
Well, it's off of the things that are referred to staff, number three.
Okay. And then uh, Councilman Gleason?
Yeah, I.
Pending agenda.
Uh, I think it's, it'd be nice to have a discussion with council on, well, just uh 2018 and 2020, when we had no fisheries, you know, we were shut down after three openers in 2018 and four openers in 2020. And um in 2018, we did not make our escapement goals in some of the areas with no commercial fishery, which means that the upriver fishery was mismanaged. So it changed, I don't remember what year it was, from calm fish controlling that fishery up there to sport fish. And I would love to write a letter and send it to ADF and G from the city of Cordova saying, change it back because it's not working. But we'd have to have that discussion. I'd like to hear what other council members have to say, but it definitely has a big impact on this town, and I do think the city should take a stand on that.
And there's a change in management structure?
It did, it completely changed from commercial fisheries here in Cordova.
Mm-hmm.
Working with Ken Roberson to open or close that fishery. And now it's sport fish and um the individual that manages up there now, he's really a loose cannon. He.
Okay, well, let's, let's keep personal comments out of it, but um I, I think I understand what you're saying though, because I got quite a few calls about this, and basically our commercial fleet caught 100,000 fish, and yet they kept uh personally used subsistence open with a, basically a 300,000 fish target, so.
They have rules if our escapement at the counter goes up above the anticipated daily regardless, if it's been below it for 50 days in a row, they can increase fishing.
So that triggers an upriver harvest after the commercial fleet hasn't had a chance to participate at all, so. Um, I'm just not sure, um, there are several ways we could handle this. You could re, we have a fisheries advisory committee, uh, we could, you could refer it to, you could put it on your pending agenda.
Is it a board of fish issue or is it just a letter issue?
No, it's internal department decision. The department made that call. So we would have.
Or reach out to CDFU and see what their thoughts are, if this is something uh they want to weigh in on or, or encourage council to weigh in on.
Yeah.
That would be my, my comment, is go to CDFU and the board of fish and say, this is an issue and, you know, bring us something that council can sign off on and discuss. I think that would be the driving force, right?
Well, it'd be nice just to write a letter to the commissioner of fishing game or Sam Raybung and say, you know, with Cordova, with everybody on board, the city of Cordova would appreciate if you would take a look at that, because not, they, just to give you just a small example, hardly any fish showed up at the Volcania Hatchery. They estimated 200,000 were in river. They had to fly to Paxton Lake and um, what's the other one? Anyways, they had to fly, fly fish in an airplane back to the hatchery just to get, and they didn't even get, come close to what they wanted. So where did those 200,000 fish go? Well, they didn't get counted.
Okay, so, so how about this? Uh, I don't know, I think we've got time to do this.
Yeah.
And uh, so how about if um, would it be all right if I just reached out to CDFU on behalf of council and then bring back, and uh they may be able to even get us a draft letter we can work with?
Yeah, and there's a lot of information down on paper that would back us up. A lot of ha, a lot of harvest data from the upriver harvest that year and our lead harvest data from this year, it comes out in March of the following year, which is real handy for management, you know?
What did you learn in that training about point of order?
Um, yes.
Pending agenda, we're getting.
We're, yeah, we're, we're getting off the ranch, so I'm trying to address the concern but, and, and wrap it up and move on to the next item, but yeah. Um, so uh, other pending agenda items for council? Okay, so to summarize, uh, we've stricken on item three, referrals to staff. Uh, we've, uh, we'll have a regular meeting in August. We'll also have a six o'clock work session uh to look at the financials. Um, and uh, we've added a look at the um city charter requirements for council participation and city business, so. Okay, uh, with that, we have audience participation, and again, for the public, that number is Uh, that number again was 253-6202, and we do have a call. So if you could state your name and residence for the record and uh, oh, I'm sorry, we don't have a call, um, but the line is now active. So uh, because of a bit of lag time on YouTube and not knowing if a call will come in, I've just kind of adopted the practice of going ahead and going through council comments and then switching to a call as it comes in. So I'll go ahead and uh proceed with council comments, and we'll start uh in order here, Councilman Gleason.
Uh, just thanks to the medical staff and uh for all the good work they're doing and to the community members for stopping stuff from uh spreading, so, all I got.
Vice Mayor Meyer?
Um, just thanks to everybody. I know the incident management team is kind of um spreading their duties onto more permanent um positions and doing that, but I just want to thank everyone for all the hard work that they have done and are doing through this and um ready to get back into gear with, if need be. Um, huge thank you to the um medical team staff, because they're, they're in the thick of it and um doing tests and getting in contact with people and just really appreciate all the hard work that they're, they have done and are continuing to do. Um, and thank you, thank you, thank you. Nothing else. Thanks.
Okay, uh, Councilman Sherman?
Um, no comment at this time.
Uh, Councilman Schaefer?
Yeah, um, yeah, thank you to city and medical staff for all your hard work. Um, also, thank you and good luck with Jason Gabrielson as you move on. We'll miss you. Um, everyone, make sure to fill out the census. You can do it online at 2020census.gov. It takes like five minutes and it's really important because it affects the amount of funding our community and our state receives and how we plan for the future. So fill out the census. Um, another fun civic thing that everyone can do is you can go and vote early for the primaries uh at the Cordova Center during business hours. Avoid the crowds, wear your mask and vote. And then my final thing is you gotta keep wearing your mask, keep washing hands, keep your bubble small. We're doing a good job, but we do have community spread. Um, and so everybody, young and old, we need to be doing our part to um keep, keep the cases well in town and keep each other safe. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Schaefer. Sounds like you've been listening to the radio. Councilman Baylor?
Oh, well, my, my work truck's a 2001, just so Mr. Allison said, uh, his old truck, and the city's getting new ones, but I make do. Um, I guess, yeah, just thanks to everybody. I think more, more updates from the city manager would be helpful from, to council. Um, you know, why are we, why are we, you know, it was kind of sprung on us on the meeting, oh, we're gonna review our police and, and uh this job announcement, but just little notes and uh our emails would be helpful. I think it was two managers ago, um, boy, he was good about giving us information, almost to the point of too much, but you'd come to the meeting and you really didn't have a whole lot of questions because you had the information ahead of time, you know, and you were able to ask the manager ahead of time instead of at the meeting. and you were able to ask the manager ahead of time instead of at the meeting, so that was always helpful. As far as opening City Hall, I think that's, you know, I'd like to see it open, but that's actually up to the manager and staff, I would think. Certainly want, when, you know, in the past, we had people kind of hanging out in here. I don't think that's something you want to have happen, so I don't know how you open it up for business or whatever, but I would support you if you have to keep it closed, and I'd, I'd love to see it open, and I'd, I'd love to see council sitting at the table more. And the other question is, we have somebody operating the phones, and I don't know if it's because you're masked, but I don't recognize you or who you are, so maybe we could introduction.
Hi, I'm Harmony. I was... She's, she's our front desk. She's been with us for six months, having just passed probation. So yeah, it's the mask.
And well, and it's the fact that we don't come down here anymore, you know, that's a, so, well, anyway, well, welcome for the, glad you're on the team.
And I'll just mention that Harmony also serves on the incident management team, has a fairly significant role, so. Councilman Allison, council comments.
Yeah, I do would, would like to see us open up as, as soon as it's safe to do so and, and get around the table again. This, this phone stuff, it works in a pinch, but it's, it's not like staring at each other across the table. So I'd like to see us open up as, as soon as we can, especially for the, for the meetings for the public, unless we can get a better, better phone system so we know who's on the phone and who we can, we can tell. I mean, there's got to be better systems out there than what we've got, but anyway, if we can't do that, then, then giving them the opportunity to at least be there in person, not like we've, you know, we've got to have a good controversial topic to, to get people to come and listen to us. So that said, I'm a little confused on the, you know, the rules, you know, I haven't read the rules specifically on this spending the COVID money, but I see several different organizations advertising for a one-year position now, you know, that would be through next year, and I hear Mayor Berkowitz, Mayor Berkowitz is up there in Anchorage telling them that it just has to be spent or committed, and he was very specific about it, or committed, you know, he's trying to buy these four hotels or whatever, properties for their homeless people and, and their, that situation, but he's, he's telling them, he's telling everybody in Anchorage that it just has to be spent or committed. And I know there's a couple of organizations in, in Cordova that seem to think that they can keep spending COVID money through next year as well, and I know the Congress is looking at with this fourth, fourth aid package, changing some of that language and such, so it'll probably all change in a, in a week or two, whenever they get their differences settled as well, so. But just make sure we're, we're clear, and not that we have trouble spending the 3.4 million, but if we did, and it could be extended, that's, that's an option there, too, so. Anyway, thank you all for everything you're doing, and, and we'll see you down the road.
Councilman Gard, council comments.
Yeah, I think we all want to see us get back to normal, whatever normal is, with being able to do business at City Hall and in-person council meetings right up on the list. But until we've ascertained, ascertained safeties of it through our medical team, I don't think we should push it until we're given a green light for that. It's a medical problem, so we should get a medical decision for it. The other thing I'd like to reiterate is the census data, we've only got 35% of our community has done the census information to date, and that will have huge impact on federal and state funds available to us for the next 10 years. So this will be a decade-long legacy if we don't get out and everybody do their part and be counted. So please do get your census stuff filled out. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, council. We haven't had, we haven't had any audience participation calls come in. We don't have an executive session item identified, so there's just one remaining motion.
Adjourn.
Motion is second to adjourn. Is there any opposition? And we are adjourned.
You have plenty of time.
Susan, this is Allison, I got a question for you.
Yes, I'm here.